I feel like Chevy Chase. Okay, in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been provided by filing a copy thereof with the municipal clerk on January 3rd, 2012, faxing a copy thereof to the Home News Tribune, the Star Ledger, the Mirror and the Monitor on January 4th, 2012, at 3:47 PM, and posting a copy thereof on the bulletin board on the main floor Borough Hall, 221 South Fifth Avenue, Highland Park, New Jersey, on January 4th, 2012, at 4:00 PM. Fire exits are to my right and your left, my right and left, your left and right respectively. I would remind members of the public and members of the governing body and staff to please speak into the microphones, and assistive listening devices are available for those that need them. Assemblyman Barnes, would you leave us on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Minkoff.
Here.
Councilwoman Pearl Mittler.
Here.
Councilman Erickson.
Here.
Councilwoman Foster Dublin. Councilman Malay. Councilman Potts.
Here.
Councilwoman Welkowitz.
Here.
Borough Attorney Schmier.
Here.
Borough Administrator Kovak.
Here.
Oh, council reports. Councilwoman Potts.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a brief report for the seniors. Their Thanksgiving luncheon will be this coming Monday, November 19th, and that'll be at 12 noon in the Senior Youth Center. That's a free event next Monday, Thanksgiving dinner. And also, under the Recreation Department, we have a mayor's teen advisory committee meeting, which will be held in this room at 7:30 PM on December 6th, and that's an organizational meeting for the mayor's teen advisory committee, and if anyone is interested in being on the executive committee, please contact Andrea Bay at the Office of Recreation here in Highland Park. Thank you.
Councilmember Welkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. The library was closed for the past two weeks due to the storm. It reopened today, actually reopened for some time on Saturday to ready for today, and they're back to their normal schedule. Special thanks to gym teachers, Rich McGlynn and Erin Washington of the high school. They organized and sponsored a food drive for the Food Pantry, and the seniors raised the most food, and they did a great job, and thanks to them. This Thursday is the turkey distribution at the Food Pantry. They have a couple hundred turkeys that they'll be giving out, and next Tuesday, in the morning and in the evening, there'll be a special food distribution for the non-perishables for the Thanksgiving holiday. Thank you.
Councilman Erickson?
I have nothing to report, other than to maybe say thanks to the Police Department and Public Works Department, and to Marlboro employees who did so much work during this short period of room, harsh weather.
Council President Pearl Mittler.
There's a lot that we all have learned about one another, having worked together through the last couple of weeks, and I'm sure the mayor's going to address that in greater depth. Just as Councilman Erickson said, we all owe a great deal of debt, and thanks to our police, fire, Jeff, Mike, our OEM team, our council liaison for public safety, Elsie Foster Dublin, the fire department, everyone who pulled together to make all of us and our citizens feel somewhat safer during these last few weeks. I also want to say that we have such an incredible partnership that we just started to develop through this hurricane situation with our volunteer residents. I'm hoping that this partnership will continue to grow as time goes on. They and Main Street pulled together to put together a phenomenal November 5th holiday, Halloween holiday, on Raritan Avenue. We were all concerned about our children walking the back streets where there were downed trees and power lines, and Main Street, and Rebecca Hirsch in particular got on Facebook and made calls and got our message out, asking for parents to go with their children from store to store and business to business on Main Street during Halloween, so that everyone could stay safe. It was a wonderful evening. We do have a Facebook page now, and Matt Hirsch, who's our Chair of Communications, gets a great deal of applause from me and the rest of us for his phenomenal work during the hurricane season. The mayor would just pick up the phone and call either me or Matt and say, you know, I need this message to go out, and Matt was right there to get the message out for us.
I don't get that kind of treatment at home, by the way. Oh, this is televised, oops.
Also, spur of the moment, we needed some help to get to all of the warming centers and to help get the mayor's message and updates on what was happening out to our residents who do not have Facebook or Nixle access, and so we called a spur-of-the-moment meeting asking for any residents who wanted to volunteer to help us to come, and 46 people showed up. They hit the streets the next day to help distribute the mayor's updates and some public safety issues. They went store to store, apartment building to apartment building. They hit as many neighborhoods as they could. They also went to some of our warming centers where our houses of worship and the Borough Rec Center stepped up to the plate. So, that's my report. Basically, it's communications and Main Street, what a wonderful, wonderful group of people got the message out to as many people as possible, and again, thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Borough Administrator's report.
No report, Mayor.
Borough Attorney's report.
Mr. Mayor, I'm pleased to report that this past Thursday, on the 8th, Judge Philip Paley approved the settlement in the River Road litigation, and I'd also like to thank the residents who attended that hearing and supported that settlement.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, I see that Matt Hirsch just came in, so Matt, Council President Pearl Mittler just finished singing your praises, so your timing is perfect, but I'll just echo that sentiment. You and your family and your extended family in Highland Park, if you're more comfortable sitting, you can sit. You know, it's, believe me, nobody stands when the mayor talks. What you did for this borough was truly remarkable, and we're extremely grateful. And, you know, I know that there are some people that, to use the vernacular, poo-poo Facebook and electronic communications, and I understand that on some level, and I understand the fact that in this community in particular, for all the incredible literacy and sophistication that we have, and it's without peer, that we have many people that just prefer a plain old message on paper. And so, striking the right balance has been critical, and you've been a critical ingredient in that process, so we're very grateful for that. A couple of other comments I would like to make, sort of on an improvised basis, and then I have some formal remarks that I want to make, because for those that haven't heard an overview of the story or missed the mayor's messages over the past week or so, there are a couple of things that I think need to be said. So, one is, I'm incredibly lucky to be mayor of this borough, and that's after a few weeks of very intense activity and a little bit of time to reflect, and a night's sleep, and what you realize is that, you know, we just have some incredible, incredible people. And the other thing is, that you get to make and keep some phenomenal relationships. I feel extremely fortunate and blessed that we have the leadership in emergency response that we have with Jeff and Mike, that we have the leadership with the police that we have with, I'll refer to them by their first names, Captain Scott and Chief Steve. Mercy is when people really need to step up and show what they're made of. And we have three extraordinary legislators, and the fact that Assemblyman Barnes, not just, and as did Senator Bono, as did Assemblyman Dyden, not only made themselves available, you know, on a professional basis, but Assemblyman Barnes made it a point to call me daily. I would say, well, since you got your power back, for sure. You know, not just to see how he could be helpful from a legislative perspective or helping us get a little quote-unquote "extra juice" to get the juice back on in Highland Park, but even just as sort of a big brother, mentor, friend, sounding board advisor, and for that I would be eternally grateful, and that is not said in any kind of cliche way. And I think I probably should formally welcome Assemblyman Barnes. Just before I make my remarks, Assemblyman, is there anything you'd like to share based on, because the Assemblyman and Senator Bono came to the community a couple of weeks ago and saw what was going on here, and they had their own reactions and sort of helped step up the advocacy with PSENG, and that's what we asked them to do, and we didn't have to ask, they volunteered, and, you know, that's really what you need. And so, if there's anything you want to say, kind of from your own observations, what you've seen here over the past couple of weeks, I'd be very grateful.
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if I speak from here?
I would only ask you to do that just in the microphone, it'll pick it up. I'm sorry. It's wireless, so you can just grab it and stand wherever you'd feel comfortable.
Peter Barnes, Edison, New Jersey. This is my first meeting in Highland Park. As a longtime Edison Councilman, I know that really a lot of the work that gets done in government is done at the council level, council and mayor level. We saw that firsthand, Mayor, with what happened within the last two weeks. As a person who grew up in Edison, who always heard so many good things about Highland Park, I saw firsthand the first responders and members of the Police Department, members of the council, you. And I think the one thing that the residents really, really want, the one thing that I learned is the most important, is that they want members who care about them, and that really can't be faked. I think people want sincerity, they want people who really care about serving their communities, and we saw that here in Highland Park with you, and all the members of the council, council president. As you said many times before, it really is an honor to serve. It's an honor to be elected to represent your hometown, and each of you have shown that. And I know that Barbara and Patrick and I are here to help you, we're always here to lend a hand if we can, and I thought it was important to come down tonight, because probably between my hometown and Highland Park, those were the two towns where I spent the most time over the last two weeks. So, I appreciate your welcome, Mayor, and I know that Barbara and Patrick also send regards. Thank you.
And thank you. I mean, whatever we did to get the power back on, and I'll talk more about that in just a minute, whatever we did, in no small measure, was attributable to the assistance of our legislators, you know, not just when they were physically here, but the letters, the phone calls, the emails, the text messages. It's amazing how quickly you come up the tech curve when necessity requires it. Okay, so I'm going to make a few formal remarks, and then, Chief, if there's anything that you want to add that you feel that I've overlooked, I'd certainly invite you to say a few words as well. So, since the Borough Attorney was gracious enough to talk about the settlement with River Road, I'm going to skip that, so that will take about 30 seconds out of my remarks. And I would now like to turn to the topic that has taken virtually all of my waking hours for the better part of the past two weeks. And to place this all in context and clarify a couple of issues that should be addressed, I would have suspected, or some may still have questions or comments, that you'd like to make during the public discussion, that's fine. If not, I want to assure you that we have received a fair amount of public input already via email and phone call. The first thing that I want to let you know is that we began formally planning for this particular storm, I'd say about five days before it came. Jeff, true enough? Yes, okay. Our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilmember Elsie Foster Dublin convened a meeting of our emergency management team led by Jeff Morris and Mike Kersey, which includes our first responders, our emergency management coordinators, to review the potential issues the storm could create, review our own resources and capabilities, discuss what resources our neighboring towns and the county would be able to potentially provide if necessary, and other relevant issues. I was also in touch with PSENG prior to the storm to discuss how we could best communicate during and after the storm. Now, when the storm first began, the Public Works Building soon had power, had power but soon lost it, as did the firehouse and police station, which by the time I got there during the storm, running on generator power. In the middle of all this, the roof at 2 Woodbridge Avenue was badly damaged, and in fact, sections of it had blown off, and the fire department was called to evacuate the residents there. So, in the middle of everything else, we had to supervise the evacuation of a building. I then went over to the Senior Youth Center while we were trying to find shelter for some of the evacuees, and that building then lost power. So, around the same time, our command center, which was established in the firehouse, we were concerned about low-lying areas and the need to potentially evacuate people who live near our parks, so I went out on a quote "tour" with one of our police officers and surveyed the storm from a police car. By that time, there was a fireworks show going on in Highland Park. We had lost power virtually everywhere, and I have to tell you that I can't think of a time that I was more concerned, not frightened, but concerned. And that was my first interest storm, if you will, contact with PSENG. I got our representative on the phone, he connected us to the people representing PSENG that were in the office of the county OEM, and I told him the entire borough was dark. This is a bona fide emergency. This is unsafe. We realize this must be happening all over your service territory, but we need the lights back on as soon as you can muster them. And they said they would make us a priority, and I think initially they did, and as some of the lights went on in Highland Park, other things became a priority, too. So, I can't tell you how treacherous it was out there during that time. Between the downed trees, darkness, downed power lines, personal safety as well as the safety of all of our first responders was a concern and a major issue. Roads, ordinarily clear, were rendered completely impassable, which created challenges would we have had to respond with ambulance or fire calls. And communications were severely compromised. I've heard anecdotally, I haven't had time to verify this, that only one out of five cell towers worked at one point during the storm. So, our cell phones had limited service at best, and old-fashioned phone service was rendered virtually nonexistent because of its need to run on electricity. Now, I'm not going to recap everything that I've shared in the mayor's messages over roughly the past 10 days, which you should all consider merciful, but as soon as Tuesday, when the storm ended, and our Public Works crews had begun the process of clearing whatever streets could be addressed safely, we were already in contact with public service. We'd already conducted an initial damage assessment to share with them, so we could try to get power restored throughout the borough as quickly as possible. At that point, again, since relatively little of the borough had power, and we knew that we wanted to begin communicating, I reached out to both New Jersey 101.5 and WCTC to update them about what was happening in Highland Park. I couldn't reach them, so I typed my first mayor's message, and Jeff Morris and I drove it to WCTC. We wanted them to either read it on the air, or at least acknowledge the fact that we had brought it there so they could read it tomorrow, or call me so that those who had batteries could at least understand what was happening in Highland Park via radio. Now, Jeff can tell you, we ultimately knocked on the door, pounded on the door, stood there shaking our head, we couldn't get anybody to come out of the studio, and this is not a criticism of the radio station, it's just a function of how few people they had and the timing it took for us to get there. So, we left the message, and I asked that they call me, and I didn't hear back from them until I heard that a certain radio personality was looking for me a few days later. But, that was the first mayor's message, and that was last Tuesday. By Wednesday morning, I was typing up one to two pages, then without Borough letterhead, because Borough Hall was without power, so we couldn't access the service here in Borough Hall initially, and the police kind of played poll review, and they rode them around town to the houses of worship to stop and shop, they posted them in restaurant windows and other public places that were open. We put them on the doorways at Borough Hall, the library, the firehouse, the police station, and people actually, it really was a throwback to colonial times. People were walking up to these locations and actually reading them. So, that was our first primitive stab at our communication. Now, the whole idea was to communicate as effectively and as quicktively as we could, and as this communications effort expanded, we were able to partner with the building superintendents from, remember, we're about two-thirds rental in Highland Park, or 60% rental, I should say. So, we convened a meeting with the building superintendents from the various apartment complexes here, and asked them to partner with us to help get the word out to their residents who were without power, and I believe that they were very effective in that. I hope they were. We got the impression that they were eager to assist us and wanted to be able to do so, and it also gave us a chance to check the particular statuses of each of their buildings and complexes as well, who had heat, who had lights, who didn't, what they needed, and what we might be able to provide with them. So, although with each passing day, additional neighborhoods or pockets of Highland Park had power restored, needless to say, frustration, anxiety and tension grew. We know that few, if anyone, had confidence in the information shared by public service, and I'm not here to defend them, but I'm certainly not here to criticize them. I can tell you that they explained, as I shared with the community, how their grid, which I now think of as spaghetti, actually works, and how they planned to repair it. The process that PSENG used in some cases was maddening, but considering the fact that their goal was not just to restore over 2 million customers and 90% of their New Jersey customer base within approximately seven to 10 days, but to do so safely, I guess on one level, I understand why they followed their process. Thank you to Senator Bono, who convened a group of mayors from the senator's legislative district, and arranged for us to meet with the president of PSENG last Wednesday, and I shared with them the specific issues we were experiencing and sought their help. The specific issue that we used in Highland Park at the time was what was happening at the high school on Abbott Street, and Assemblyman Barnes, correct me if I'm wrong, he sat in the meeting very quietly, and after I finished speaking, he was gracious enough to say, I believe that Highland Park is almost like a poster child, it exemplifies the issues and the disconnects, if you will, that PSENG is experiencing with municipalities. And it wasn't said in a critical way or in a confrontational way, but I think it really helps set a tone for the meeting to let people know that there was a frustration that really extended well beyond just the lack of power, that there were other ways that we could partner for the collective good. So, while all this was going on, I was receiving dozens and dozens of incoming cries for help via email and phone, people not who were just angry, frustrated or confused, but people who had serious medical or other needs and needed real help in addressing their circumstances. We were in touch with our freeholders, as well as the governor's office, all the while trying to ensure that we could get the power back on, and in the middle of all this, Middlesex Water notified us, really just as it was happening, that their backup generators were not working, and we would lose water pressure, because we had nothing else to deal with at the time. Thankfully, in Highland Park, Middlesex Water was able to let us use a little-known interconnection valve that we have with American Water, so we were actually able to reroute our water supply, and as we did this, we did not have to remain without water service, but we weren't sure if it would actually work, so we didn't want to notify the public and provide misinformation. It proved to be an effective stop-gap measure to maintain water service and prevent empty pipes from potentially freezing and bursting, until Middlesex Water's service was restored about six hours after it was lost. Now, there's a lot more detail that I could provide, but I wanted to give you a sense that in real time, this governing body and our first responders were out trying to provide comfort and shelter to our most at-risk residents while keeping everybody safe, and doing our very best to keep you informed. We made every effort to share what we knew, when we knew it, by whatever means we could muster, and this was without missing a beat and doing everything possible to persuade PSENG not to forget about Highland Park. I was grateful that so many responded a week ago Sunday to our Facebook and word-of-mouth efforts to communicate a more realistic sense of the degree to which power outages were affecting Highland Park, and I'm thankful that so many local establishments were willing to post and provide a spot for the mayor's message to help us better communicate with our residents. And I think now it can be said, Jeff Morris can attest to what I'm about to say, since he saw it, that now that Highland Park has had power fully restored, and I don't say this out of any sense of self-aggrandizement, but this mayor not only put his borough first, he put his dignity last when it came to pleading our case with PSENG. Before we left Senator Bono's office last Wednesday, after what I thought was a productive and very candid, and at times very intense discussion with PSENG's president and members of his team, I literally got down on my hands and knees and begged PSENG to take care of the rest of the borough as soon as possible. I think those who saw it were stunned. Jeff, you were stunned, right? I wonder if Senator Bono was mortified. Some might have thought I was clowning around, but I was trying to reassure everybody, assure everybody, that I was deadly serious and would stop at virtually nothing to do what we needed to do to get the power back on in Highland Park. So, as we move forward, there will be much discussion of things we should do and can do for the future. The first goal was to get the power back on and get borough institutions like the government, schools and library functioning again on a regular schedule. Now that these things are happening, we will conduct an in-depth debrief with our first responders, administration and governing body, as well as professional advisors and appropriate boards and commissions, to learn more about how we can begin almost immediately, preparing for what I hope will never happen again, but must assume could. I'd like to thank everyone for their patience and resilience during what was an unprecedented storm with unequal consequences for us in New Jersey and Highland Park in particular. I'd like to again thank our police, fire and first aid professionals, as well as all our volunteers. To say they worked overtime under really unimaginable circumstances is an understatement of gargantuan proportion. They worked tirelessly, often on double shifts, the maximum safe period that they could work to help keep us safe. Clearly, conditions were less than optimal at best for them, too, but thankfully, there were only two minor acts of vandalism in which cigarettes were stolen during this entire episode. We maintained extra patrols in unlit neighborhoods, monitored the risk of loss of power to fire alarms, smoke and carbon monoxide detectors, and gas lines here became a model. Other police departments from around the state called here, asking how we managed without any incidents when people were being threatened at knife point, or were stabbed or threatened at gunpoint in other communities. We did this managing the dynamics of a state highway fed by another state highway and a county road, which is truly remarkable, and our thanks to the two gas stations involved who completely cooperated with our efforts, we're very grateful for their help. So, if some of you were disappointed or if not furious with our response to the storm, or perceived lack of visibility of the borough government, all I can say is we did the very best we could, and I hope it's evident from some of the remarks I'm sharing. Hopefully, you have a sense that we were juggling a significant number of real-time events and critical priorities at great personal risk to many of us, doing our best to manage them, communicate what we could as quickly as possible, and ensure that we were able to maintain public safety and order in the process. I'm going to close with two observations. I was heartened repeatedly by the spirit of many of our residents. Despite inconvenience, frustration and dislocation, many volunteered to help us find our way through an incredibly complex and challenging two weeks. I thank each and every one of these people, and many more whom I'm sure I don't even know about yet. Additionally, I feel like I'm in the presidential debate now, but additionally, like the woman who emailed, going on her second week without power and said, it's very tough, but I know we'll get power back, just please don't forget about us. I wrote back to assure her that we would not forget about her, and she told me that even as the utility trucks drove by her home, five in all, she was cheering them because she knew it was then just a matter of time until her power was restored, and that she even grilled dinner for one of the crews. How could I not be inspired by that? The other point in closing is that the electric grid will be fragile over the next few weeks while PSENG continues to stabilize it. We experienced this yesterday, and I believe a couple of times today, and may experience it yet again over the next several weeks while this stabilizes. We in Highland Park will begin our process of debriefing and planning for future emergencies. In an era of scarce and shrinking resources, this is going to require innovation and balancing difficult investment choices to secure our quality of life during times when it's business as usual, and to secure our safety and well-being at all times, whether it's business as usual or not. Thank you for your patience, and I hope that you had a good rest while I read all that. Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I think you covered it pretty well, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Chief.
I just wanted to reiterate, whatever could have went wrong, went wrong. I think during the height of the storm, we had a large oak tree that's now a totem pole in front of the police headquarters, was cracked and was swinging over the roof of the police department. We had to pretty much evacuate the police department, we moved our dispatchers to the rear of the building for their safety, the tree ultimately did fall on the roof. Our radios went down three times, luckily we had backups that we were able to use. But what I wanted to say was, I've been in this borough, associated with the borough and living here for at least 55 years, and I've never seen an event like this. The challenges that it created were unbelievable, I would have never foreseen it. What I wanted to say was, the members of, and I'm just not speaking to speak, the members of Borough Council, particularly our mayor, and our council president, Bill Mittler, and our chair of public safety, Elsie Foster Dublin, and our Borough Administrator Kathy Kovac, we all worked together on this, and the mayor put in a lot of hours. He had to be, I know that because he kind of took over my office many times, and he probably was there at least 10, 12 hours a day between his office and mine, and if people think we could have done things better, maybe we could, maybe we learned from some things, but I could tell you, it wasn't for lack of effort. Everybody pulled together, and luckily, we had no injuries, and we certainly had no deaths, so I say thank you for your support. I also wanted to thank our OEM. Jeff Morris was here continuously, at one point, I begged him to go home and get some sleep, so everybody really went above and beyond. So everybody really went above and beyond, and fortunately, we're, we are where we are now, and thank you all.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you. Okay, well, I think we've done enough of the talking. Public discussion?
I think we have all these residents here. I would like to, as a, as a resident, I'd like to thank the mayor, the public safety people, everybody who contributed to making the place as livable as possible. I think most of the residents really appreciate it. I certainly do, and thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
And Mayor.
That was too busy to stop to say thank you, but that's okay. We're very grateful. Okay, we're going to have another public discussion at the end of the meeting, so I'm going to read the items on the consent, consent agenda, which I will need a motion for us to adopt. 1112306, resolution to approve and execute grant application with New Jersey DOT for the improvements to Valentine Street. 1112307, resolution to approve shared services agreement with Middlesex County for milling and resurfacing Central Avenue. 1112308, resolution to approve participation in the Garden State Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. 1112309, resolution to approve home improvement program agreements. 1112310, resolution to approve awning and facade contract. 1112311, resolution to approve and execute grant application for 2013 Green Communities Grant. 1112312, resolution to approve change order number one for the Highland Park Library HVAC system. 1112313, resolution to approve estimate number one for Envirocon LLC for HP Library HVAC. 1112314, resolution to authorize the HP Police Department to apply for the Middlesex County Sustainable Economic Improvement Fund. 1112315, resolution to approve bills list. 1112316, resolution declaring November Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. 1112317, resolution to appoint housing authority member. 1112318, resolution to approve change order number one, Helios Construction. 1112319, resolution to approve final pay estimate and closeout change order, Helios Construction. 1112320, resolution to amend annual salary resolution. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
So we need this one, too? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, so I need now a motion to adopt Chapter 159? Is this the one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
No.
I'm sorry.
This one first.
Yes, Chapter 159 Resolution, Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
This one also, 322.
Mm-hmm.
Chapter, okay, 1112322, Chapter 159 Resolution, Body Armor Grant, can have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, and an open item, correction on the agenda, 1112323 is a resolution to approve Pay Estimate Number Two, H&amp;S Construction.
Mm-hmm.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Bill Mittler?
Yes.
Councilman Erickson?
Yes.
Councilman Potts?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Okay, public discussion. Mrs. Pickard, if you would please state your name and address for the record.
307 Magnolia Street. I also would like to thank the governing body and the community employees to keep us safe and sound. We were very fortunate. We were out barely two days and never lost power for water or anything since then. I've lived through a number of storms, and I recall, in 1957, we had a hurricane in September, and the seven pine, six of the seven pine trees in front of my parents' house toppled and missed, fell at an angle. Had they fallen straight, they would have crushed the whole thing, including the four people that lived inside. So I don't also upset with fallen trees, so long as they're not humans or animals nearby. I have some questions. First of all, CTC, I had, I have still old-fashioned transistor radios. I couldn't get anything from them, except New Brunswick, that were carrying, but Edison and outline ears. Never once did I get anything about Highland Park. And like you, I tried to call them to find out what happened to the borough. Couldn't get through on the phone.
So I'll just mention that I understood over the weekend, you know, and on the Sabbath, I went, when I finished with synagogue, I went to the warming center here at the Senior Youth Center. And apparently, by that time, I guess a number of mayors had come up for air long enough that they were calling in to CTC, which is fine. And on Sunday, we were very busy because we knew that we had an issue here, because PSENG thought about twelve percent of the town was without power, and we suspected the number was in the thirty percent range, if not higher. So we spent a fair share of the morning organizing a messaging campaign so we could get people to calmly call PSENG and say, "No, we really don't have power, even though you think we do." And I won't give you an education about the metering system that we got from the president of PSENG about why that is, but the point is this, people said to me, you know, "CTC is looking for you." And we were just too busy to deal with that on Sunday. So Monday morning, I called up the morning host, and I said, you know, "I understand we've been missing each other for a few days." He had some questions. I talked for about ten minutes between about 7:45 and 7:55, and that was that. And that was really the extent of the radio contact, because we found candidly that we were able to, to target our message locally, I think, as effectively using these other more traditional means. So had the opportunity presented itself again, we would have done it, but, you know, I think the combination, and it's, it's going to be a work in progress, but I, I think the combination certainly was the case. But I, I think they just probably had problems with their phones. I heard at one point that there was a wire to their transmitter that may have been down near the CTC tower, back in the meadows. So I'm, I'm not really sure, but, you know, we certainly didn't ignore them. It was just a function of time and place and when we could actually connect.
No, I think it was the station. It's not the first time that CTC ignored Highland Park. Anyway, I have a couple of questions. 309, a resolution to approve home improvement program. What is that?
Councilmember Wolkowitz, would you speak to that, please?
Number 12.
Yes, hi, Ms. Pickard. Several months back, we, in, in an effort, let's see, in an effort to meet our COA obligation, we floated bond, put some money aside, and began a home improvement program that's for lower-income residents of Highland Park. And it's based on income, and we encourage people to continue to apply these. This is the first applications that are going through, and people can get up to eighteen thousand dollars worth of home improvements done on their, on their resident. And that will help us with the COA obligation, as well as improve the neighborhood in general.
So if I could, just a postscript to that, is that the intent is to be able to improve at least one major system in the home, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, plumbing, something like that, so.
Sounds good. And awning and façades, where's that going? On storefronts or?
That, that's part of the Main Street budget, and, and when a retailer wants to put a new sign up, they apply for some help with it from Main Street.
I took my awnings down just three days before.
Good choice. Good timing.
I have one more question. Now, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other public discussion, Jeff, did you have anything you wanted to add, just as a courtesy?
No, Mayor, but thank you for your, your.
You're welcome. Matt? You know, we're very, very grateful. I don't know if there's anything you want to add. I don't want to prolong the meeting, but.
I don't know what, I don't know what to, but I did want to just say.
We could not have done all this without your help.
Thank you.
Whatever this turned out to be.
And likewise, and I, I, I'm, I'm uncomfortable petting, but it's, no, I, I did want to make clear that council was, was, was unbelievably supportive during, during this whole effort, and the, the, the impromptu meetings and, and outreach and availability was, was something special, and frankly, you know, represented a, a, a certain, you know, represented expectations of local government that, that, that brought my family to meet at Highland Park in the first place. So thank you. And then just, just moving forward, you know, just, just for people here and watching on TV, that, you know, we're gonna, we're, we'll, we'll meet as a committee, following up, and, you know, and think about, you know, our, our, yeah, at least, at least what, what we can do moving forward in a more strategic sense. But, I mean, hitting, hitting the, you know, boots on the ground, and, you know, I wasn't at the volunteer forum, you know, I wasn't at the, when, when, when forty-six residents showed up at the senior center, but that's.
On a day's notice.
Yeah, you're right, on, on a day's notice. And, and that was just unbelievable. And so it's, it's just, it's pretty incredible, so.
Thank you, Matt. You know, there is one other thing I just want to mention real quickly, and I won't belabor the point. It does speak to Facebook and, you know, this new world of social media that we live in. You know, this is all about, you know, I've heard all these great technical terms, curating a community, you know, whatever that's all about. But, you know, there's, there's Facebook, and there's face-to-face, and there's, you know, traditional and new media, whatever, however you want to refer to these dynamics. One thing that, and I won't dwell on it, and I don't want to create a lot of mystery or drama, but, you know, at one point, there was a, somebody said they posted a rumor on Facebook, not, not because they were looking to cause trouble, they were looking for confirmation or, or validation. And I'm, I'm not going to criticize the individual. And, you know, I, I started to write a post, and I just didn't have time, and I, I think the theme of the post was Voltaire, I think, was the one that said, "I may not agree with what you say, but I'll defend to the death your right to say it." You know, what, what can be more precious than free speech? On the other hand, at certain times, you know, maybe there's something to be said about just the "uh-oh" factor, and, you know, I responded to dozens and dozens and dozens of emails and phone calls during, during this whole time. And I would always say, if people have a concern like that in the future, call, email. I realized the borough was without power for several days. It was hard to get through to me on the borough phone. People seemed to manage to be able to find my home phone number and were able to call me. They, they found my cell number and texted me. I'm not encouraging a flood of phone calls on my cellphone. What I'm saying is that if you're not sure, ask somebody to ask me. I'm pretty accessible. I try to be accessible within the borough.